Oh, thank you.
It's that.
Yeah, put my face.
It's water.
Yeah. We see it, you know, right there. That's why it's cool.
Good to go.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four of Fortified Commissioners' regular meeting on Thursday evening at seven P. M. It is now seven oh three. We'll start the meeting with a call to order and a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
Well, let's say our own thoughts, uh, think of all of our members that are sick and then the past before us, the troopers, structure workers in this crazy world, so let us keep them in our prayers. Thank you. All right. Huh? Turn my volume down.
Yeah.
Mute mine?
Yeah. It's just an echo. How's that better?
Okay.
I have no idea. Do you have your computer on mute?
My computer is on mute.
Oh, it's stopped. We seem okay. I don't hear it now. Oh.
Better? Hope's that. Okay, we know public rights. Public rights. If, uh, if you follow the MFA reports from Chief Plummer, uh, training, the video only. If I only have a couple of things about Chief with you before, Chief Plummer, it never happens to us because everything is just like the way it's supposed to be, so no questions. Um, in terms of, uh, Deputy Chief Regina's, uh, report, I just want to point out that, uh, I understand that, uh, De La Pierre, every child has their practical presentation exam for, I believe it was, a firefighter two. And, uh, you know, I'm looking at the classes that are scheduled for twenty twenty-four, and I believe that I read some of these, uh, last month. All of the members of the department that are presently enrolled in Harper County Fire School, Locat Fire School, and, um, the Canadian Fire Academy. So my hats off to, uh, Chief Regina and his staff. We're, uh, setting this up and looking at, uh, the way he has laid everything out for the members is just outstanding. And I know that he's got a great staff that's working for him, and so my hats off to, uh, Captain Pato, um, for his input, uh, one with, uh, Jack and Anderson as well. He's excellent.
Just so no one gets what it's about.
Correct. Really. Thank you. Guess what? It's not here. Unless I missed it. Oh, thanks. Very good. Congratulations, gentlemen.
And come in, uh, we're at General Flashville, uh, members of the high range, uh, city county, uh, both the class here, we have sixteen members that are going to retire from, um, within the department, and they're just being scheduled, uh, so looking forward to it.
I also have, uh, the monthly report with the Fire Marshal's Office. I know that, uh, you know, he has now included his, um, budget in his monthly record, so we'll go over that, you know, you know, sure, let's see that is, you know. I'd like to just comment on that. While we can go away, just next. I also have the, um, letter regarding, um, two other individuals, Emma Sweeney and Michael Goina, for their acquaintance to the Channing Development Specialist within their training. So my hats off to these two ladies, well, for jobs, um, that I know that they're very passionate about, and I know they'll do a good job with it, so. That's where we're at. Okay. Pledge of status. Um, I review the ledger status as I expected, we're at almost all a hundred percent used up, which is a good thing. Well, I'm sure it's not it. Um, we did run into a few things, uh, a few little snapples with the budget, um, I'd like to, uh, thank Fire Marshal, D. J. Jordan, for coming through and helping us out with some of his budgets, uh, offset some expenses in the fire department budget. Um, we appreciated that very much, and, um, other than that, Chiefs, anyone to comment on the budget, or looking pretty good for the end of year, or?
We're looking in good shape. Uh, I also want to thank the council, Janet, who over the paper ball, um, this is our first year of the new paper ball, plus the stated increase that was played on up there. Uh, we do have, I shouldn't say it's actually a good thing, we saw the call line increase, we saw response, exactly what we do for it. So, felt good stuff, but I want to thank Janet, she referred to us the money along with the council, so we do appreciate that.
Yeah, we did run into a few hard times, thank you, Chief, for mentioning that. The finance department, um, through your cooperation, the finance department, um, worked out pretty well, and the council cooperation also, so. We appreciate that, like I said, it was a movement. It did exactly what it was supposed to do, to get the guys out to the calls, and, you know, we got a pretty good call volume this year, so. We'll be better prepared for that in, um, next year's budget, to go and prepare that. So, uh, anything wish you on the ledger status? Not on the ledger status, but I want to match up for once, I think that, you know, my, uh, I did not cover one of the things under the Fire Marshal's report. Sorry to say that, I, uh, met them, but, um, my understanding is that, um, Fire Inspector Mike Solonier, the sign, and Fire Inspector John Sokolowski is not available till July, so I know, um, D. J. has asked to put in, uh, request for another yes, for D. M., Fire Inspector. And also Karen Colicchio was hired as the administrative assistant to position, and she will be starting on June the seventh. So that was my, that was my whole thought for that mention. Yes, I'd like to congratulate Karen as well, on her new position in the Fire Marshal's Office, it was well-dated, so if we can get those guys out and do the inspections and get them out into the field, and they're kind of kind of was on a big board to have to go along with that office. Um, and I wish the, uh, Inspector, which is Inspector Mike Solonier, I wish well, I know he has, uh, conflicts with his other job, thank you for your hard work, and now we're to issue. We will be, uh, working hard to post some for the, uh, positions in the Fire Marshal. So with that said, um, anything else I could, uh, the ledger status, if there's any?
No, there's just so many.
Okay, all right, um, so all favor except on the ledger status as presented to the board? Aye.
Aye.
All business, uh, radio system update, Chief?
Uh, we actually got some good news in the head, uh, starting with Jane from the news firm, actually, I think, that's horrible. Uh, so the next time, uh, just to make sure that I make sure we're direct, we did, we did, I worked the car, there's no, all that stuff, uh, so we do have a quick news tonight. Uh, so we start the process, uh, as soon as that, um, process went over and the testing of all common entities is complete, uh, they'll start the install, starting with the P. Fire Department with the second, so. We're hoping probably beginning of July, mid-July, they'll start with the P. and then just people, but, uh, Uh, antennas and metal installed on all of our buildings. So things are moving. It's just, uh. The whole process. So.
Our orders process, the old system.
Looking forward to January ten. And so.
It's, uh, we're on the twenty yard line, would you say?
Pretty close.
Pretty close to the twenty yard line. Do we kick it in yet?
I could chief.
It's been a long. Um, Chief Blackberry is unable to make it tonight. He's working the, uh, country thing. Brand of things are status quo.
Uh, there's no one today something.
Right. Yep. Chief, you want to leave that on there or do you want to just put the we or something to put it up?
Uh, you can just leave it on it. I bet that plays a little.
Uh, building per call update, that's through the, uh, billing company.
So the building per call is actually. We have the plant they worked at once also moved is. A hundred percent home. Now it's just one thing we get specific calls will be sending at the company. And they'll do the collection process. So everything's, uh, it's, uh. Now it's just the basic setting that they work in. They take care of the rest. And then, uh, on a monthly basis, they'll send us a check, a check out of the town for those, uh, what we don't.
So we'll leave that under our own business every month as an update.
I mean. But I goes into the general fund, so that's not. I mean, we'll know.
Well, we know how much is going.
Absolutely. Well, the. Those government for the.
Anything else?
Absolutely.
Space needs are three, four.
So I sent a memo to, uh. Acting family and January trial down about the space name for the department, the updated one that we had assigned to Jamie. It's a lot of matter. That was sent to Jamie. Uh, they're looking at some possibilities of, uh, properties. Um, don't really wanna. The whole is too much, but she's been working with us and, uh. We're moving forward. Just put it for that way. Yeah, that's all part of it. That's all part of it. Jamie is aware of that and, uh, she'll leave it reaching out to the council if I, I think she already asked and, uh, to discover.
Uh, some evaluations I didn't, the commissioners didn't receive our packets from the chiefs. Whether they're early evaluations, Chiefs, thank you. Very well done. Uh, we'll be, we will be going over now and scheduling, uh, through the chief. Fire Marshal, like I said a couple minutes ago, congratulating Karen, Alicio, that, um. That office was burdened with a lot of paperwork that has been brought on by a lot of the new construction, um. Um, violence from state, numerous other things that backwater the Fire Marshals. In getting out into the field and doing their respective. So we felt that this would be a great position and a great new added position to help them out. Once again, it's going, it's gonna go out. We'll get a report back in a couple months, see how it's going. Karen, Alicio, it's a mainstay in the town. She's worked for the town for many years. She put in for the position with. Like ever since she came out on the top that. Just like to congratulate her and I know she's gonna do a great job and, um. You know, if there's Fire Marshal office and there's only thing that the commission can do to assess you to make her, uh. Move in smooth and easy, just let us know and we'll be happy to wanna help you out.
So I spoke with Hermes the other day. He then received, uh, two offers. Uh, he felt that they were a little low. Uh, so he's gonna leave it on, uh, with the. Forgot what he called it. Uh, it's a wholesale company that sold it. And, uh, he says that right now the market has gone up and down. So. He's gonna leave it there for a while because the, the, the do office will low wants. And he wants to get more. Well, again, but the numbers that he told me, I believe. They wasn't even close to what we would want. So. Um, it was basically trying to get something out there. And then they'll take that truck and, you know. You know how that works. So Hermes is still working on it. Contactful and monthly on it.
Hey, open on your business. Especially the canceling program meetings.
I, I suggest that you know later when you cancel it. You get to the middle of. Uh, July and I. Find out if there's really nothing new on our agenda, I mean, which. Um, cancel. Okay, I'm. And he, he's, you know, that. What? My apologies. I agree. Because you never know what's happening.
Right, right.
I don't know if you can. If you cancel it, I can. Now, if you always call especially. Like if you don't need to cancel it, you can't cancel.
Okay.
These sets have a conflict.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think that that's, that's something we should definitely all the others and both of our. Oh, absolutely.
So what we, what we can do in council, we can't order meeting.
And if we need to do something.
The way you can then call it special.
Okay.
During the world's busy. Do you have any, any agenda?
We could still have the regular agenda. But it would just be considered especially. Right, right. What do you guys think of the law? I know there's a lot of vacations. Usually it's great here. It's June and we're pretty sparse though.
Yeah, that's happened.
When it doesn't come around.
So it'll be just after fourth of July.
When it is even August.
It'll be, well, Thursday, it's the fourth, the.
Fourth of November, the eighteen.
So it'll be eleven, it'll be eleven, so not much.
I will make a push in that. Keep the, um. Schedule remains. Canceling for July and if we need to call special.
Okay. Okay. All of them are canceling the July eleventh. All of them. Okay, so our July meeting is canceled. The thing that we need to do is special meeting. Okay. That's all I have under the business. We will go to public participation for the second. Chief.
Uh, it's funny. The, uh, there it is. Uh, I did a long, a little one, a less. Two hundred years ago. Um, and they've donated, uh, money to the fire department. Uh, they're paid to cheer the children for the department every year and greatly appreciate their support. Um, they moved their event this year over to Rocky Hill. Um, they're looking to possibly do two events. There's year one in Rocky Hill and in Newington. But, uh, I do want to thank their committed support and the fire department. It's a great organization. So greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, they certainly are good, good, right, the fire, but they're always there for us, always. They're great people who love that.
Um, secondly, I, I wanna thank the Chamber of Congress for recognizing the new department of Public Safety Award recipients this year. Um, it's a great honor to go and accept the recognition from the department. The department works hard every single year and it's nice to be recognized by the organization. But, Lord, so we want to thank everybody from the Chamber of Congress. Uh, great honor.
He brought the handle to the party. Thank you for accepting it. I'll follow up.
Uh. One more thing, uh, the fact that the I S L R. Uh, we're gonna be sitting down and start the new process in July. Uh, she was a little busy this June. Uh, but, uh, once we start getting the big words established. Uh, we're on, we're on schedule and they look pretty good. They're going through it last. If we get to that point, something very, very probable for this department. I know I wouldn't know a lot of people. Um, we worked very hard over the last year to try to streamline stuff that gets stuff in order. But, uh, like I said, July will start the meeting further and then the big work is on board. So just wanted that to. Yeah, okay.
I, uh, I'd like to come. Chief, I, I don't think there's anyone that's a bigger cheerleader than yourself with your staff. Get this as a class two rated. And some people I don't really know what they think it means to us, but to us in the service, it's. It's monumental to this department if we got a class two rate. Thank you for all your hard work. Let's hope this, uh, goes through and.
I'm pretty confident it will. I mean, the, the numbers are pretty. Pretty decent now of the paper for noting the amount of training that's coming on the realized here and stuff. Um, this, and it's not. It's not meaningful. It's just paper where the money goes up. It's really important. And, and I also wanna mention on the M V C came through a new trip. Uh, they were able to do all the book testing and we had a support. Uh, it's all updated on the system. We provided it to the I O R A. So I can't thank the M V C. We gave it to them in the May and they did through. So. Uh, like we appreciate that also because that's a huge part of the I O R A's. Is hydrant and the, uh, book testing, all the hydrants that we have that they want. So that was the imperative by them. And like I said, we've all already helped.
Wait. And I'm sure you, you already have this planned out. You're always ten steps ahead of us and we're actually. But, um, if this does go through, I think we should present it to the. Council and the town. At a town council meeting and let them know and, you know. Because this is big. This is, this is a big, big deal. So thank you.
We need, we need to make the public.
We need to make the public aware. Because they could eventually see that in their insurance and their insurance that they pay for their homeowners, their property. You know, their car, everything else, so.
Uh, the last thing, um. The department was worried the restrictions for the two state troopers. Uh, we did one last night. We also did one where the trooper fell there. Uh, it was on our whole day. We put the flag up, uh, during the general. For there and trooper. Miller, I think, uh, last night, uh, we were unfortunate in, uh, Rocky Hill, uh, to the party. Time for us to be there. But, uh, I wanna thank everybody too and their family and all the person. It works, uh, great sight to see. And we have great access to both. But it's true.
Absolutely. And, uh, I would raise a few things else that. Amen from the public. Again, I said the sight to see coming down ninety-one to have every bridge. From Bradley Airport to Long Island Sound, Nevada, every bridge had a flag on. For the officer and every bridge on eighty-four. And ninety-one Meadows, Bellator had a flag on. That, that just goes to show the brotherhood, the sisterhood, the family of the fire department, police department. EMS.
So. It's difficult because the state, they organize it and they kinda give it all of that. One of the chiefs kind of said, my chief priest will be turned on the, uh, trooper called there one. Uh, chief Dan Ireland from, uh, Rocky Hill was in charge of the one there. Very, uh, long the office. But, uh, to the state, at least that does a lot of the coordination and sustainability. Uh, yeah, chief priest, uh, put everything together for the.
Things don't just happen. No, no.
There's a whole plan that goes on for a couple of days. And unfortunately, it's not. Not easy to play. Just wanted to say. Last minute.
Yeah, you know, a few hours to play. But that's just one more thing that this department does, you know, we got something to do. Get it done within a couple hours and our members dropped everything they're doing. So I'll stay away from.
And then last thing, I had the honor of being the foreboard member for the, uh, kind of what Starford, so there's a huge position. Um, that's a paid position over there in what Starford, so the hundred percent to be a part of that process. Um. They're a huge supporter of New York then, uh, were a huge supporter of what started bringing the cumulative and so forth. Uh, partnership has not been bad. And I appreciate Chief Priest providing us all because he thought that that would enjoy agreeing and the process of the partner would. They can hear the city. So, um. It went well. And it's a pretty, pretty good. Pretty good process.
Boy, I would wear it turns.
It was not.
So that speaks by the strength of Chief, uh, uh, made department as it.
It was nice.
That's an honor to you. Pretty hip.
All right, that's all.
With any of our.
I have one question. I understand that there was mutual public opinion call this morning. Field, this morning, they just wanted to see any.
So there was, it was a, uh, our major.
Right next door.
Uh, the red corner.
Main street. Yeah, garden.
Uh, the red in that area. Um, we basically went to the scene. They had it pretty much under control pretty quick. And then we went in on that bit, uh, standby coverage of the fire out while we were doing standby. We actually got a call for it all there. So we actually went to that, um.
In their town.
In weather. So, um, yeah, it was more of a manpower than anything.
Yeah, I, I just personally have my sweet thing, friends of the department that had come out for. Public hearings and the innovation that we lost. In regard to the E L C discussion as well.
You're welcome. I'm sort of making it right. You're good.
I do have one last thing as a small guy. I do wanna thank all the council that came out during that very. Um, it was nice to see the, uh, council there seeing what the department does. I hope you guys have gained other respect for a lot of that stuff and a lot of technology that we have and we use. Um, it's nice to see the support there and we appreciate you guys coming on to, to watch it.
I know a couple of great kids there.
The only thing they learned about cars is the guy in the white NASCAR. But you try to find the tape and show it with fire.
Well, that's good.
He also won my hands.
Um. But that's why our debt program. It's kind of like. See a good thing. Hey, why not try? You know. An architect program or Peter group to the part of it is a good thing. It, it's not wonders. We just warranted two members and company two last month that were condensed. Result and, uh. I take out this, this is a gentleman that came from the Ukraine and. The young eighteen year old man who was on the precious piece of the program. Always, always minded, always. Always wanted to do his whole life to be a firefighter and he spent four years around the debt program. Now he's a. Sworn, um. Firefighter company two and I believe he was just a. He just did finish his firefighter. He just finished the firefighter flight, eighteen. There, there's some people that come in there that don't even have what he does. He's graduating from high school in the farm. So. You know, it's, it's great to have this. It's a pleasure to have. I mean, they also. I think we had a little fun.
I think so. And it was also interesting to know that not only is he is the bucket of, um.
Why they try.
That, that you, you can maneuver it and manage it from above, but there's also.
Just. Well, obviously, Big Papa is always watching.
Yeah.
Big Papa's down there. Everyone's watching. Everyone.
Everyone was, I think everybody was welcoming. I know I, I went, went out when Tim was there, but I know you. Kind of. Went around and tagged a few folks, um. Women and.
He must think.
Probably is, uh. Somebody that I hadn't seen in probably over three years.
I thought.
Yeah. And I know you kept saying you were treating them information, but I think to a person, what we heard was him.
What we tried to be.
A lot of good information. It was good to hear.
Some cool stories. There was some cool stories.
Oh, yeah.
There was some cool story. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else under public participation? Okay, we'll go to Commissioner's comments. We'll start with Commissioner.
Well, I'll first apologize for being late. I got some, I'm on a tough phone call. It'll get away. Um. Otherwise, things are. Good shape. I'm very happy when we get our quest.
One quick, one quick time. Looking at, looking at the, um. Report of Uche Trauma. Happened to notice that, uh, you know, this is June fourteen, thirteen, thirteen, thirteen. And, uh, we're already at seven hundred eighty-eight calls for the year. From last year. From July one. To July one, which would rapidly approach. We know that we are well over in the count of what we did last year.
Uh, we're pretty, we're pretty close. We're at eight hundred and six miles. So we're pretty close.
We're close. So, um, you know, it, it just goes to show that. I was thinking about this the other day. With all of these apartment projects that are coming due. Uh, we've already got people who are being into the new places on the road in turn by. Uh, the hotel is getting ready to open up in a couple of months right here. Uh, July or August, you know, that, uh, looks like. Ain't road property. Come along. It's always. Yeah. So, uh, I, I can, I can hear you. Rapidly increasing over the next, um. Well, eighteen months if, if not sooner. So, um. We'll definitely be, um, keeping an eye on that. And of course. Um, speaking about this department going to class two sometime in July, we'll keep it our fingers crossed. This is, uh, just incredibly outstanding work that your staff. Has done, like you especially, the chief, because you spearheaded this. So, um, I had it off to you on what you have accomplished. In the last couple of years since I have been a commissioner. Totally blown away, as I've said before, as to what this department does on a daily basis. So people did the work. All I go, this were, uh, commissioner. Pay all the marks also. Say every month that this is a family. The family, we all stick together to accomplish and accomplish the role of a good agent department. Not only for us, but mainly for our citizens, our visitors. For anyone that comes through, we want them, we want them to know that we're here to protect you. We're here to serve you. We're here to invite you into our firehouses. Whatever we can do for you, we will do for you. Part of our mission statement. I know that's how the chief wants it. Know how this is a mission. So. Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work. And with that said, I wish everybody a very joyful summer. As they all say, stay hydrated. So. Um, I can, too, I can tell you, uh, you mark my words. This is June, that the third Saturday in July will be the hottest day. Because that's the extravagance, obviously, and that is always the hottest day in here. So. Um, we'll be having our fireworks. Let's, our residents be careful with the fireworks. If you have any questions about. Fireworks or fire pits, our Fire Marshals. Available. We do have some leaks on my neck you can reference. Um, so just please be safe. We don't wanna have to meet by coming to your house for a call. Um, and with that said, I will, in a motion of virtue. All of that. All of them. Aye. Thank you.